Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:02 and I hereby call this meeting to order. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is to welcome Andrew for the Boris Leichman, our newest member.
Yes, welcome.[43.12][43.12](APPLAUSE).
The next thing on the agenda is reorganization. Would you like to make a comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I put in front of you an actual rendering from our legal counsel, which was suggesting for our reorganization to actually have a full complement of the board. Before we actually had this election, we had three different possible candidates and having checked with legal counsel and also state ethics, apparently we have had a rendering of all three, except I only put on the two because there's two people. One of our, I know you congratulated Andrew, but we have another member that will be joining us who's in Washington today and would not be at this meeting. So, legal counsel had actually said you should look to the full complement of the board, but one thing that many small towns and regular towns are not aware of is that when they vote for a chairman, if there's any extra stipend involved, that the -- that's kind of immaterial at this point because I think we have a past history of just voting unanimously and people doing that. So, they do outline what we should do and the proper procedure would be to have the full complement of the board and then decide if you want to continue with the -- it's not an earth-shattering amount of extra money for a chairman, but $100 tips it in the direction where that's considered an extra remuneration. And so, anybody who would be doing that would need to either recuse themselves from voting from themselves or defer the stipend to something else. So, I just put that out there so that you would know, so I think it's up to the board how they want to proceed, whether they would reorganize tonight, but town council did suggest that we have the full complement of the board and you guys make that decision.
I think in the past that we've -- I think there was one time we didn't have everybody and we waited until the next meeting and just voted then.
It should be a full board.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we just move this to our April, it's a Tuesday.
Eighteenth.
We did it last year.
Yeah, the April 18th meeting. Put it on the agenda for that.
Okay.
I hear a second.
I second.
Roll. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Announcements. The Millville Library, we spoke about it at our last meeting, Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 8th from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., all ages welcome. Registration is required, so give them a call in advance so they can plan for the massive crowds. The Millville Earth Day is April 29th. It's an initiative to clean up our little community. In the past, the Boy Scouts have been very active in assisting us with that. I think we need to do a little bit to try to do a better job of organizing that activity.
One of the things, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to let you know is that Amy Sutherland from our Conservation Commission has reached out to me in particular, to articulate to the board, that she's really hoping that we get a full board participation. They are looking at from 8:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning for the local organization and then with the Heritage Corridor, doing more of the river cleanup from like 1:00 to 3:00. So, she is going to be in touch with us. You know, Amy, she's got a lot of energy and I think it should be great to try to get each one of us, maybe even take some of our own local roads where people live and become captains of that. So, I'm just going to put that out there. It's, you know, a couple of weeks away. I think we have some time and maybe if people can lock themselves off, it would be a great -- I think full participation by the board would be really wonderful. And she asked me to ask that.
This evening will be --
Oh, are you doing announcements?
Can I do a hot off the press announcement?
Sure, thanks.
Okay. So, I just actually left it on the seniors. I printed it today. So, the girl, this, a couple of Girl Scout troops, there's three Girl Scout troops, 327, 366, and 651. They applied for a cultural council, a cultural council grant back in the fall and they were awarded. So, on Wednesday during April vacation, April 19th, from 10:00 o'clock to 11:00 o'clock at the John J. McTamar Gymnasium in the Millville Elementary School, there'll be a community zumba event. It is free of charge to all that participate and it's for all ages, all abilities. So, it's during April vacation. It was really written in spirit to have the seniors there. We coordinated with the senior director for a day where they didn't have any events here so to really make it a nice community day. So, people should be seeing those flyers on cable and around town now that the instructor has been shored up. So, just wanted to let everyone know about that.
Okay.
We have two sets of minutes to sign, the minutes of March 20th and February 21st minutes. We're able to sign the April 21st first minutes this evening. Mr. Barrett is here and he'll have the appropriate number of signatures. And we also can sign March 20th, but it will require Mr. Lawrence's signature.
I feel if you vote for that and you have, we'll have the ability to get his signature afterwards.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes of February 21st and I will abstain from March 20th.
So, we'll do the 21st first and I'll second that.
Roll.
Aye.
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 And I will make a motion to accept the minutes of February 21st.
All right. I second, I second the motion. Roll. Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
We have the majority of the members present.
As you all know, it's our annual town election yesterday and Mrs. Callahan will read the --
Unofficial results still.
Unofficial results.
Somehow, there is some dialogue back and forth at the Town of Blackstone over the final numbers. So, our town clerk, who is not here this evening, had given me the tallies. We had 309 persons, registered voters, come to the polls to vote for the BMR School Committee in Blackstone, Jack R. Keefe, who I understand is the son of Danny Keefe, has been elected. For the BMR School Committee of Millville, we have Karen Downey Vernon, who was elected. The Board of Health had returned Dustin Ciccarelli. And for the Board of Selectmen, we already know that both Andrew and Thomas Hool are joining us on the Board of Selectmen. Highway Surveyor, once again, Brian Malali, has been elected, bless you. We have a Library Trustee, we have welcoming Pamela Thistle. Planning Board, we have Michelle Dumont. And if you weren't careful, Aunt Andrew, you had three unofficial votes that went to you on the Planning Board as well. And then Tree Warden, we have Alex Malali. And Trustees of the Veteran Memorial Park, we have Mr. Richard Hurtu, who's returning there to that particular board. And that, for the most part, is that. There was still one also for a BMR School Committee position. The second one that was on the ballot was Tammy Lemire and that was the person who received the second highest votes for, I think that's for the unexpired term. So, I think it's great. We had a good, healthy ballot and I think it's great to have some new people as well as the institutional knowledge of those people who served for a number of years.
Thank you, Mrs. Callahan. Public forum, citizens' comments, and we have two distinguished visitors with us tonight, Senator Ryan Fatman and Representative Curis. Would you like to join us?
Briefly.
Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? Bring your own chair? Yeah.
And we have Mark.
Neighborhood Selectmen.
Sorry if our attendance is a little unexpected, but we wanted to come by and just let the community know and let the board know that Jen Callahan, myself, Representative Curis' office, Joe, and Chief of Police had a great meeting the other day, talked about some of the goals of the Town of Millville and how we can work together to achieve those goals. One of the big topics was budgetary and also the Town Hall. Obviously, in the past years, we've been used to sitting in that Town Hall and talking there, but not necessarily here before the Board of Selectmen. And so, we're all committed to making sure that the Town of Millville is successful, the Board of Selectmen is successful, the Town Administrator is successful, and through that, I think we can all be successful and that's something we're really excited about. We discussed the Millville Town Hall. Kevin and I are committed to trying to put about $100,000 into the state budget to try to have some sort of an idea of what we might be able to do with that. We're going to make the language broad, therefore, you know, it might be for a feasibility study or for what the Board of Selectmen sees fit and how to expend that money. And then also, we talked about a bond bill with $800,000 that was from DCAM, a DCAM bond bill. Essentially, that $800,000 could be used to revitalize that Town Hall or do something which the Board of Selectmen and the state would see fit. Lastly, on my end, I just want to take time to congratulate Andrew and congratulate Tom. That's wonderful to serve and for Andrew, I think he's probably the youngest Selectman in the history of the state. If not, he's pretty close. So, congratulations on that. It's wonderful to see young people stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Just a few comments. First, I want to actually congratulate the Town of Millville and also neighboring Town of Blackstone for having contested races for elected offices. It seems like for the past three, four years, sometimes you don't even have as many candidates running as you have openings on various boards and committees. So, it's encouraging to see contested races. I think, you know, that says a lot. People are starting to get involved again, which is really good. Congratulations, Andrew, and I wish Tom were here so I can congratulate him as well. Just wanted to give a brief update relative to the House budget. I spoke with the Town Administrator this morning, or yes, I'm losing track of time here.
I know. I just was telerolling. I'm losing track too. It's okay.
I met today with Todd Smola, who is State Representative, who is the ranking member on Ways and Means from my caucus, to discuss budget priorities. And I did share with him the $100,000 earmark that we were asking for relative to the Town Hall. As Senator mentioned, we would like to see that if it's adopted, written broadly enough, you can use it, you know, as you need, but even if it were just to offset the expense of one-time expenses associated with the immediate move to the police station and then the retrofit of the Legion to, you know, accommodate your needs for the next, you know, X number of years, I think that would be helpful. You know, I will offer a degree of caution. We are told this is a tight budget, but we hear that every year. So, we'll see how it goes. We certainly will advocate for you, you know, on those items as well, though. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
I think one of the components of that with a tight budget is Town Administrator's done some good work communicating with the administration and at some point trying to get somebody to see the Town Hall.
So, it's fortuitous because at 5:30 tonight, I heard from the Lieutenant Governor's office, and she's coming tomorrow at 12:30 potentially because they've had a shift in their schedule. So, I'm glad you're here because I'm just informing these guys as well.
That's wonderful.
So, we wanted her to see, obviously, all of you have been very supportive of the vocational technical school and that has been a major player in how we're renovating. And we wanted, especially before the students have to leave, there's been an ongoing, we've been asking for a while, to come out. And so, Eric called just literally, you know, a little bit of an hour ago. So, hopefully, if we can pull the resources together, we'll make that happen, but I don't know if he'll be around.
Has that been confirmed? I was with Lieutenant Governor at 4:00 this afternoon.
They called at 5:30.
Okay, she wasn't sure at that point whether she's going to be on at 12:30.
So, it's a matter of us pulling together the people to be able to do that. So, I think we've touched base with a number of instructors and I think it's going to happen, but obviously, I'm going to touch base with them first thing in the morning and I'll call both of you and let you know and if you're in the area and not that. I mean, it's the same thing with us. If we could make it happen, we'd like to do that, you know, so.
We are in session, so that's the only --
Yeah, we don't gavel in until 3:00 tomorrow, so, you know, if it is at 12:30, I will join you for at least half an hour or so before I end my last thing. So, also, just relative to the House budget, just to give you a timeframe, the first cut of the House budget will be released on Monday. We suspect we will have until closing the business on Thursday to put amendments in, so that's why I'll be able to actually file the amendments for the towns that I represent. And then, the entire following week, which is school vacation week, Ways and Means will be analyzing that, categorizing amendments, those types of things, and then we will take it up probably Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the following week. So, you know, within three weeks from today, we'll have at least a sense for where it sits relative to the House budget. The Senate will take up their budget until, you know --
A week prior to Memorial Day, so the last week in May.
Right. So, even if we're unsuccessful in the House, it could, you know, end up in the Senate budget and then just during the budget reconciliation process, you know, we'll advocate for that as well. So, I just want to at least give you a sense for timeframes that we're looking at, so you'll know as soon as possible.
And the reason why, as Kevin had made the comment, you know, we hear it's a tough budget often, and it often is, but sometimes we're able to get this money in. And so, the importance of having the administration come down and take a look is if it does get in, at the end of the day, they have the ability to veto. Obviously, we don't want to see that happen. So, having them come and --
Actually see what's going on.
See the importance of the project is really --
So, timing is fortuitous. Lieutenant Governor can come tomorrow, that certainly would be the hoop in town.
And I know I can't be there if that's the case. I, we start a little bit later than they do in the, later in the session, but I have a mandatory sexual harassment training for the entire Senate, so I have to be there. Either that or I don't get paid or can't vote or something like that, so. But, I'd also, I know we've talked about community announcements. I think it's incredibly important to make one, which I know a lot of people in the Town of Millville, Blackstone, and local area participate, and that's, Jen, for a very long time, has done the egg extravaganza with the Easter Bunny and, you know, it's a wonderful community event in Sutton. I believe this year, it's still at Waters Farm, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I get the privilege this year of bringing a little one myself. I have the nine-month Tadley.
Going to roll around.
And she's looking forward to the petting zoo. So, we're looking forward to that and people should definitely come.
And before we leave, I have to share something funny. So, the other day, I'm driving, I don't even remember where I was, but somewhere in Blackstone Valley, and I saw a sign that said helicopter egg drop. I'm like, did Jen Callahan rent a helicopter this year? It turned out --
No, it is one of the largest ones at Mass Troops.
It's a different function, but it's just kind of funny. I thought you'd rented a helicopter this year.
No. If I can just, on our agenda, we also talked about a communication from MMA that the Chairman is going to read, and it is about the two budgets that are coming out. And just so that you know, aside from having this devastating loss of our Town Hall, Millville has always had talk about tight budgets, extremely deficit-oriented budgets, and this year, we're approaching our budget once again with an operating deficit to go forward. And so, the governor's numbers, even though that says 3.9% increase for local aid, is actually nothing for us. So, anything you can do with your Chairman in articulating any kind of increase there and also increases for the school, that would be really helpful because --
Yeah, there was actually a letter circulated today already by one of my colleagues to increase the per pupil amount to $55. He had done this similar thing last year, asking for 40. A bunch of us signed on to it and it went up to 55. So, he's asking for 55. He shows maybe it'll go up to 70, who knows?
Yeah, 60 maybe.
But we'll be happy with 55, which will be approved over what's currently been proposed. And again, we don't know what the House is going to propose, so it may be higher than the governor's number already, so we'll find out.
So, it's just, it would be very helpful to us because we're negotiating with our finance committees and it's a pretty, almost, you know, when you approach a starting fiscal year with, you know, an operating deficit of almost 500, you know, half a million, it's, we've got to come up with that money and it's just --
And you have the added complexity of, with the regional school system too, with the timing of those votes and everything else, so we're certainly set up to that.
Thank you.
And I would mention too, I had my meeting with the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Karen Spilka, and I brought up a concern about Chapter 70 and regional transportation aid for schools. And one of the things she said is, you know, you see the governor's number, the Senate always beats the governor's number. So, she wouldn't get into the specifics about that, but I feel confident that we'll come in at a higher number. I always say that the governor's is a baseline and I think people can expect to go up from there, which is good news for the Town of Millville.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you're doing for us.
Speaking of budgets.
Next.
I said, speaking of budgets, you have the next one.
BBT.
Yeah.
I can kind of summarize that.
Good.
The overall BBT budget, the operation appropriations, $22,230,852. The thing to understand or how that impacts our Town of Millville, and basically, I'm just going to go right to the bottom line here. The operation budget that will be assessed is $327,642 and the debt expansion is $14,834 for a total of $342,700, sorry, back it up, $342,476,000. And the good news is it's only a $159 increase over the previous year.
Do we have less students or is it the --
It's actually a combination, but I mean, if we have our vice, I mean, one of our ranking members of the BBT School Committee, who chairs the Budget Subcommittee, was good enough to share us with some notes. I don't know if you want to come up and explain. I know that we did have a reduction in the number of students, but more importantly, as you know, Dr. Fitzpatrick has made obtaining of grants as a major fundamental piece of his budget and proportionally wise, every year, he counts on that and really pursues that. So, there was a major initiative put forward for a work skills and technical equipment grant of over, I think it was over half a million, and that helped change the figures and so I think Jerry can talk about that.
Yeah, that was really the key. Thank you. That was the key to the high budget. We had applied for a half a million dollar grant and in working with the students and also the instructors there, we were able to go in one of, I think, 68 different towns that had gone and looked for this grant and we were selected for $495,000 worth. And the fun part about that is that we had already done our budget and we had put in there extra monies for some capital improvements that we needed at the school, for equipment and things of that nature. We were hoping to get this grant, but we couldn't count on it until we understood clearly that we got it and get the official paper from the state. Right before we were going to release the budget, because Mendon is the first town that requires it, you have to be 30 days in advance when you reach the regional system. So, it was like, two days before it was to be released, we were told that we received this grant. We immediately went into the capital budget and started crossing off everything that we had in there, which would have been an expense to the district, and able to pay for it in terms of the certain grant. So, I'm pleased to say with that, we did not require any capital. We're going to pay for that out of the grant, it's all going to be assigned to that. And at the same timeframe, as you mentioned, we do have three less students than we did the year before, which is the way it happens from time to time. And with those two numerics put together and with holding the budget down to about a 3.05% increase as a total, we ended up with, I think, $159 as the increase this year relative to what it was last year. So, when you look at all the things, mandates and all the unfunded mandates, as we all know, that the state puts you through and to be able to come back with that and to say, I've got a $159 increase, we're quite proud of that. And again, it's yeoman work by the people up at VBT in securing grant after grant after grant. We just got another one for $4,000 that was from the National Dairy Association on some things that they had done with the National Dairy. So, we do everything we can to try to get grants from every situation, every revenue source we can. That's why we're able to keep the cost down and make, once again, for the eighth straight year, Millville is the town that has the least cost, $8200 per student. That's fully loaded. That's transportation, debt, and the entire tuition for $8200 per student. That's quite an accomplishment and it's yeoman work by the folks up there that do it and I'm happy to represent them for it, so.
Oh, we're very proud of them as well.
They do a nice job.
For all the assistance that they've had, an opportunity to really showcase to this town in real action during a major crisis, so we feel that as well.
I'm going to invite you to sit there for one more moment.
Yes.
I'm going to skip in the agenda, I'm just going to skip over to the skills awards. And I would like to congratulate the recipients of the medalists, finalists for Millville from VBT. So, I want to recognize those individual students. Gold Medal, gold medal to Jayden LaForest. His field was internet working. Brian Disroge's, robotics and automation tech, silver medal, went to Sarah Busham, telecommunications cabling. And I believe she might be one of the ladies that came to --
Yes.
The Legion to help us.
Yep, she is indeed. She is indeed.
And bronze medal to Ken Tubman, internet working, and Matthew Castello-Weldling.
And that's, thank you for doing that. That's what we should recognize for those type of efforts. Just to give you a quick note on that, there's about 186 medals that are given out for the states, okay? The thing that blew me away this year, I can remember we used to try to get to 30 and then 35 and 40. This year, Blackstone Valley Tech was able to secure 98 of the 186 medals in the states. So, that's quite an accomplishment in one, and again, this shows that we're dedicated to the trades, we're dedicated to demonstrate to people what it takes to be able to be successful today. You have to use the idea of the, you know, it's just a matter of people that use their hands and not their, that's gone. Forget about it. Today, it's technology, technology, and you have to use both of those assets to be the successful and obviously, that's demonstrated in those numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Finney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll backtrack to the MMA 2018 budget bills. You heard the Senator and the Representative Speaker where they stand with this, and my two concerns, basically, of the Chapter 70 support and the lack of support for transportation.
Yeah, it's always been underfunded and every year, it ticks up a little bit, but during lean years, it has tended to go down, but, you know, hopefully, that that's an area that, you know, both the House and Senate will add to. It would be very important for us. Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to make sure that in correspondence, because it came right before the MMA, the Worcester County Selectmen's Association had sent out their spring meeting announcement for April 6th at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission Office at Union Station. I just wanted to put that out there.
I didn't, I was thinking about that myself. I don't know if I'm too late in registering for that.
I don't think so. I think you'd be fine. If you'd like, I can make a call tomorrow and --
I could do that.
Okay.
I think that'd be interesting. Anyone like to join me? You're welcome.
A hunting with some Girl Scouts in a lip sync.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for reminding me of that. Next on your agenda is a toll day. Oh, sorry.
If I could just interject, I know we had Senator Fatman and Representative Kiros Cup, but I don't know if we made a general public forum announcement, so I didn't know if there was.
If any other public citizens wanted to comment.
Do any of you?
I have come, I, I have some issues.
Please, please join us.
You want to come in?
Yes.
I have two points.
Could we have your name and address?
My name is Helena Lica, I live in Five Foot Road in Millville. I have, one issue is about the sidewalks and the crossings. My daughter has, you know, has disability, physical disability, she's wheelchair-bound, so we have sometimes really problems, you know, when we walk downtown, I want to go to the, to the bike path, that we have to leave the sidewalk because there are, you know, the mailboxes in the middle of the, of the sidewalks, and, you know, the wheelchair just cannot pass by it. And when we get off Craker Street towards Central Street, there is pedestrian crossing, but on the other side, there is a step. So we have to go across the street to the next driveway to go on the street, and we had like several incidents where the cars really didn't care, and we got into situations which were dangerous.
I could be happy to share with you, I can give you some good news, is that the town has received grant support.
Yeah, I've heard that, but I want to make sure that once, yeah.
And that's a project that's, it's imminent, it's going to start.
Yeah, but we have to make sure that, you know, like, if there's a pedestrian crossing, that there's a curb cut, you know, that we can get on that sidewalk, you know, so those are like things which are important, and maybe that there are signs, you know, because when you, when you come off, like, come up the hill of Central Street, you cannot really see that pedestrian crossing, so cars don't really slow down. When, you know, when I drive up, you cannot see it on the ground, and there is no sign for the pedestrian crossing. So I think we need signs, and maybe we, we can put some, like, wheelchair, you know, or something, you know, that, that people are aware that, you know, that's, you know, there may be people who, who need more, you know, like.
In the process of the, the grant, they will come up with a design, and they will hold a public hearing.
Okay.
And that is a time where anybody from town can come and express their concerns, and they'll have all of their plans and what it's going to look like. Once everyone gives their feedback, they take that back, and they make adjustments for those things.
Yeah.
So there's going to be a forum for that, and we can make sure that, you know, that you're aware of it, or you're told of it, but, and then they'll do a final presentation of what's going to happen.
Yeah.
So your concerns are very legitimate, and I'm sure with ADA and those requirements, the state's going to meet those, but I would recommend making sure that you go attend that meeting, or send a representative to that meeting, or leave your concerns with us in a written form, so that we can give them to the, to the designers, so that we can have that implemented for, for everybody within town.
And that's looking towards the future. I really, really appreciate your coming, because as much as we talk about infrastructure and the need to bring us up into the current century to understand how we need to make accommodations that are not just reasonable, but are livable for people and their quality of life. I, I have been saying this, and this board has really, you know, embraced the, the notion that we're moving ahead with all of our infrastructure, and not just on Central Street, but we've also just received another grant for complete streets, to look at all of our streets, and whether they have, you know, accessibility, not just for bikes and for pedestrians who are, have, you know, the ability physically, but also those who don't, and who are challenged, whether it's a senior with a cane, or whether in this case, it's somebody who has the need for another way to be accommodated. So I'm really happy that you did come forward. I, I do want to say that we've got this major initiative that goes with this grant that's already starting, and is in the beginning design phases, and we will be having that public hearing. But the other thing that you raised, and I will talk with our highway survey, is that in the interim, I think that we could provide some better alertness to drivers, so that they're aware that this is a crossing, even currently, in the conditions that, that the sidewalks are, which is deplorable, that we'll be able to, to start to get people to understand that there is somebody within the neighborhood, that they should be slowing down. The other thing that the police chief brought to this board, and then, you know, brought it to the board's attention, was the ability to set a lower speed limit in areas where we believe that there is a need, and can do that across, across town, and, and I know the chief has talked about doing that on Central Street.
Yeah, we've improved the seventy, twenty-five mile an hour limit.
Yeah, what appreciated, people maybe would drive forty instead of fifty.
Well, and also, yeah, we, you know, we'd like to make sure that we have a presence of, you know, seeing that, so I think if we maybe work on two of those notifications, that would be helpful, you know, knowing that.
Thank you.
Drivers who are approaching, that there is somebody in the neighborhood, and then the other piece of it, monitoring the speed of drivers in that area. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, so I have a second point.
Yep.
It's the playground. So I was on the playground committee. I, my profession is, I'm an architect, I, in, I was awarded with the Allen Crocker Fellow at U-Mont Boston last year, two thousand and fifteen, and I worked on a study on inclusive playing community spaces, and, you know, I wanted to bring that to this town and, and support the new playground, and then the playground was donated, which is wonderful. But, you know, I did, I did get a glimpse of a picture like a week ago, and I'm very concerned, I must say, how, you know, what I saw. I'm not even sure if the playground meets ADA requirement, but I would love to see for the community to step, to step up, and I would love to offer my expertise on the topic and see like, what can we do? Let's see like what, how the playground looks like, what is it, not rush into it, and just see like, what do we have? How could we make it inclusive? I know that there's a play structure which has no ramps, and the person, you know, who approached me said that there is tic-tac-toe and some music instruments, and I saw it, and, you know, like, no, like, nobody wants the children, no, no children are really interested in playing tic-tac-toe, this is something nobody plays with, but this is always to, you know, like, a point where we cross it off of the ADA list for the children with disabilities. It's very important for children without disabilities to be part, you know, to actually experience and make, form relationships with children with disabilities, it's very good for them, there is great research behind that, but I think we can set a great example as a town and as a community, to say like, let's sit down, okay, what we have, it's wonderful that we already have a donation, so we have parts of the playground, and let's see what can we do? Because, you know, like, I don't want to hear my daughter for the next three years, or other parents hear their children come home from school and, and, you know, in tears and say like, all I was able to do in recess was the other children, you know, like, watch the other children play. And this is what will happen, and I know it, because there is the play structure, and I was told, yeah, well, we were thinking about ramps, but, but, you know, like, there's nothing up there, so we just didn't do it. And I'm like, okay, but, you know, it's not fair to the children, you know, like, my daughter didn't choose a disability, I didn't choose for her to have it, and there will be other children who will come, there are other children, everybody can have an accident, you know, God forbid it happens, and, you know, we all can be in, in this space, it can be our neighbors, our friends, our grandkids, our, you know, like, so I think as a community, you know, like, I would love to support, because I think this is an opportunity. I wish, you know, that the, the committee, the playground committee would not have been like, would have been like involved into, you know, like, looking at it when it was donated, because, you know, I think a donation is a wonderful thing, but, you know, it was very rushed, I think. So I would love to, you know, like, offer you my, my, my time for free, you know, I have an, I have an expertise on that, and, you know, I, I have a daughter, I, you know, I have a profession which supports that, and, and I have my study which I would love to share with you, and, and then to see, like, see how much money would we need to make it inclusive, not only ADA accessible, because ADA, you know, like, we just cross off those tic-tac-toes, which, you know, like, it's not, it's really not fair. But like, let's see, like, how can we make it actually inclusive, so our children all can play? My daughter has friends in school who don't, you know, who are not, you know, like, who are not suffering from a disability, and she would love to play with them, you know, but she is not allowed then to do so. And, you know, it's not fair to the other children to be asked, oh, you know, because I, I know that there were sometimes children who were asked to stay with a child with a disability, you know, and I don't think it's fair both ways. I think all the children have, have a right to play together, you know, and experience and share each other, every, you know, I'm not, not, I'm my daughter's, or, you know, like, my daughter is, my daughter, so I'm biased, but everybody who can spend time with her will benefit from it, you know, she is just such a good, good person, and she is, you know, so, and why do you not want, you know.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm all, I.
Everybody to, to have, you know, to share that, you know, because that's what we need too, you know, that we need the children to learn compassion and empathy, you know, and this is how they can, you know, they do, you know, and I, I started a foundation, I do have a foundation where, you know, it's called Space to Thrive, where I bring children with and without disabilities together, and I think I could, you know, help a great deal to, to make this playground something really beautiful for this town, and, and an example for, for other towns.
If you could leave your contact information with us.
I will.
We'll pass that on to the Playground and Recreation Committee we have in town.
Have you sat, I know that you've talked to members of that committee, but have you actually gone to one of their meetings and sat down and spoke to them?
No, I, I asked for, I asked one of the members for, you know, like, for, for a meeting, and, you know, it hasn't happened yet, so, you know, like, I just like want everybody, you know, like, to be on the same board, and, and, you know, and I think, you know, like, like, when we really think about it, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do, you know, to, to not rush, and because I heard, you know, they want to build it in April, like, don't rush, you know, like, let's just see that it's being done right way.
Because I know I've had, and I, our daughters are in the same grade, I'm not sure if they're in the actual same class or not, but I know I've had conversations, because I've heard that you were concerned.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and, you know, I, I hear, well, we're going to try, you know, but I don't know if anyone's actually met face to face to have that conversation, and I think that needs to happen, rather than trying to get information from one person on the playground, on the Parks and Rec, and, and, you know, the playground committee that we had was trying to start up and fund it.
Right.
So I think when the donation came.
Right.
It, the, the charge for that initial committee, we felt wasn't, you know, that it was kind of taken care of, because we had the donation. So I think it's, I think it's a valid point to make sure that it's handicapped accessible, and there's things there. So I, I obviously will take your information, but maybe we can ask the Parks and Recs to have a meeting to discuss, you know, how they can make it more inclusive, and, and I thought, and again, this is myself having one conversation with one person, but them saying that they were going to look to, to be putting in some type of equipment to make it, you know, to make it more inclusive.
Yeah.
So I don't know what that is.
I would love to be part of it, you know.
But I think that needs to be a conversation with that, that whole group, rather than fragmenting and, you know, calling one person on the phone and talking to one person here. I think collectively, it needs to be a discussion.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out who, you know, like, whom I need to talk to and who is responsible.
Well, you came to the right person in the group here, and I can take that information and most definitely give it to both the chairman and, I think, the lead people who are working on that, and explain to them that you'd really like to be part of that process, and I don't foresee them not having an ability to, to have you come before them. I know it's been a little bit quiet, because it's been the wintertime, and they weren't putting the playground together, and remember, equipment is equipment, and, you know, the, the layout in the design is, you know, something that I think that they'll take a strong consideration, and maybe even also some, some input from you, most definitely about maybe some other possibilities aside from just the design elements, and I think you've raised some good points, and, and I know that they would be very receptive to, to meeting with you, so I'll, I'll work on that, and, and I can get back in touch with you and, and let you know when their next meeting, and have them put you on the agenda.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I would like that anyway, because when we have our public hearing for the road design, we want to make sure that you know.
Can you do a few?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, I'm sorry. Good evening. Les Davis, eight Craker Street. First I speak as a resident, I want to welcome the new members of the Board of Selectmen. Glad to see you take an active role in, in working in our town and bringing our town forward. Having that, having said that, I'd like to see this board move forward now. We have a tuned down, a new town administrator, and we've had it for a while. I think it's very important that the five of you work very closely together, and that you look down the road of how you want to, where you want to take this town. And once you decide how you, where you want to take this town, and what you want to do with this town, that you need to work with your town administrator and have her put those pieces together for you. I think we'd like, very important that the board not become individually involved in, in trying to make that happen. I think that's the town administrator's responsibility, and report back to you on how that operation is, is, is being put together. I think it'll take a big load off of each one of your shoulders if you don't have to make individual decisions about certain things that arise in this town. I think those days are over with. I think that if we have certain things that it can be handled by the town administrator, that's where they need to lie at. And we'd also like to see that we charge you with putting your personal likes, dislikes aside, and work together for the common good of this town. And I think we keep that in mind, and compromise is a great thing. We may not always get what, everything that we want, but if the town comes out the better for it, then that's what we're working for. Each of us don't have to have everything we want, but if we can have, present this town with a better life and a better avenue of moving forward, I think that's what this, all the residents of this town expect.
I think that's a direction we've been heading in in the last year.
You have.
Yeah, and I'm disappointed that, you know, Selectmen Barrett indicates we've made significant progress in that regard.
Yeah.
The town hall was a wrench in this, folks.
Yeah.
It's kind of made us stumble on a few other goals that we were trying to achieve.
Yeah, but we picked ourselves back up, and we're moving forward.
We did, and we're, and we've.
You know, this is the time.
I'll take a, I'll take a statement from one of my colleagues and very good friends. Mill, we're, Millville's on the move.
Mm-hmm.
And we are with that. I'd like to move as the town, town moderator now and say that we have our annual town meeting coming up, and I'm doing everything in my power to make that more interesting, more informative for all our residents, so that maybe we can boost our, our attendance at, at our annual town meetings. Along those lines, I would like to put to the town administrator and to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, that I would like to see a meeting between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and myself, so that we can go over the, the articles, and put them in an order where it makes it move more smoothly as we have our town meeting.
It's already on my, it's already a note on my agenda.
Okay. I'd like to see those, some of those articles combined together in a, in a consent article, so that we vote on it, on one, on one vote, and get, say, six of them, six articles out of the way. I'd also, also like to put on notice that if anyone, Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee wants to give a presentation, it's their responsibility to give me their PowerPoint presentation, it's their responsibility to give me their presentation on a flash drive at least two weeks prior to the town meeting, and that's May the eighth. So two weeks prior to the town meeting, I need to have that in my hand. That goes for anyone else, Finance Committee, any committee, anyone who wants to put a PowerPoint, PowerPoint presentation together, or a presentation together, I need a copy of that at least two weeks prior to May the eighth, so that we have it on hand and ready to go, because I have to coordinate that with our cable people, so that we have the computer set up, we have the projector set up, and we can move it along, and we can, I can make out the agenda, so to speak, in the town meeting, so we can move smoothly through all our articles. Don't want to be there until one or two o'clock in the morning, and so we'll, we'll make sure that we address those items ahead of time.
Les, do you think it, it would be best if you put that into an email form, and then Mrs. Callahan can then blast it to all of the departments?
No problem, she will have it tomorrow.
And then that way, it is your words stating what you need at the meeting.
Yeah.
And then that they're all informed at the same time.
Yeah.
It might be helpful.
That effectively gives us two weeks to put a PowerPoint presentation together. My experience from my professional life, for every twenty seconds of presentation you have, it takes more than two hours to prepare for that.
Yeah. So, give me as much advance notice as possible. So, and if I can be of assistance.
I'm looking for a little bit more of a buffer on that backend.
If I can be of assistance, please let me know.
I think he's trying to do like a week and a half, not a full two weeks.
Okay. So, but I would like to get, uh, see if I can to get a meeting scheduled with Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Administrator, and so we can go over, uh, the town meeting and plan it out so we can run smoothly. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Can I ask something?
No.
I am. No, because I've been reading up on the consent to agenda and how a lot of the towns are doing that now at town meeting for the, um, those kind of, um, yearly, I can't even think of the word, I don't gloss words, but, um, those routine things. And if you're leaning that way, are you, and you said you're looking to educate people, is that something that's going to be put out prior to the meeting? That might be on cable through a video, through, um, you know, tweeting it out, through our Facebook, through our, you know, is there something that we can get that out there? So when people come in, cause it's gonna not only be new to the people who are coming the first time, because that's a lesson within itself, um, but those who have been going, it's going to be a new format. So I didn't know if that is part of your education of getting it out to the people via media, um, to inform them of how that consent to the agenda works.
I will attempt to do that and give it something that we can put on our webpage and then we can get it out any way we, you know, we possibly can.
Cause I mean, Tim and Jesse.
It's not really that difficult, you know, on that, uh, I think, uh, the explanation at the town meeting will, will, will take care of it. And usually the consent article is only for those routine items that we vote on every year, streetlights, things like that. But we do it every year. Instead of voting each one of those articles, we'll just read them off. It's the consent article, everybody in favor, I, no, and it's done. So it's pretty simple.
Okay.
And I think, uh, then the, hopefully I may have the final word here, but, uh, you might not have known, but this board had already, along with, um, our town moderator, had agreed to, instead of having a, a full half an hour, um, meeting before the meeting, this idea of trying to resolve things within one meeting and one meeting that starts at seven PM as opposed to one that starts at six thirty and then the real annual town meeting starts at, um, seven. That this will be a piece of it too. Uh, we all recognize people's times are valuable and in most communities, they've consolidated some of these routine things. So I think the step in just having one meeting was big. I think the second step of rolling this out and getting people familiar with it is good. So thank you for reminding us about the next step.
Okay. Toll Day.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you have just the, the basic application. It is not completely signed off. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, put it in front of you, uh, before the chief and the, um, the fire chief, the police chief and the highway service, uh, sign off, only because I know that even when I came into this position late, um, in the spring, there was a number of people already trying to get on the agenda for, for toll days. This one is the library, uh, and, uh, I will make sure that it has the necessary signatures, but I thought that if, um, we started to think about the spring, uh, they, they have theirs, uh, wanting to have May twentieth. I think it's an important date for them and that they've already discussed it with their board. So even if we put it on, uh, and put it in with the necessary signatures, I'll make sure that it conforms to that. But unfortunately, before this meeting, I was not able, um, to get all three of them, but I thought it was still important, uh, for the library to at least know that you were, uh, gonna have their application and were looking, you know, to May. So I have plenty of time to do that. I can put it in your next packet that it's completely signed off, but.
I would say.
First, you need a motion to approve Toll Day.
Right.
Well, usually we approve it once the fire, police and highway survey have all signed off on it. So I think it's, I think it's safe to say that we could pencil them in and that we won't give their date away because they submitted first. And once all of that's been signed off, that we'll do it at our next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep.
Maybe just put when it, you know, received A, so we know they were first.
I was even, you know, surprised at how soon it came. So that's what I thought, well, she's like, I gotta get it.
Usually, usually they start in April.
Yeah.
Uh, the Centennial was doing this in April, so.
So there you go.
And October and April and October.
Okay. I'll do that and I'll make sure it's in the packet the next time.
Next on the agenda is Verizon Poll Attachment Agreement. Basically, uh, with the utility companies doing it, in this case it's Verizon, um, they've, uh, surveyed or they, they've looked at all the utility polls and the attachments to them and that kind of thing. And, uh, their, their findings on, on the surveys is that they found thousands of commercial and municipal attachments that were not licensed to various polls. Uh, and there's a twenty-seven odd page, um, contract here that we're gonna refer to legal on it. However, we can identify the, the polls that need to be licensed. And they, uh, they occur on, uh, Central Street, polls three dash one, one, two and three. Esti Street, eight, two, six, five, one, seven, four, three, nine. Lincoln Street, polls one, eleven, nine, seven, eight, twelve, six, five, four, three, two. And Main Street, polls forty-four and polls forty-five. They're not compliant or approved.
Is, um, are we not compliant because we've put something on there? Is that our, um, our line coming down from the, their new fiber optic line coming from the Millville School down to the police station? Cause Esti Street, well, S Street to Lincoln to Main to Central looks like our fiber optics. Is that what this is?
It could be, should be.
That's my best guess.
So that would be Charter would have to.
Right. And that's, that's, that's the issue because Verizon, Verizon is pushing, sponsoring this and they're a direct competitor in that regard with, with the broadband and the internet. So, uh, you know, I would recommend that legal look at this agreement.
I, I agree with you. When I first got it, uh, you know, because we get an awful lot of things that will come from utility companies at times, just about basic things, whether they're applying herbicides, uh, you know, over the, uh, the power lines or whether, you know, we've got people, uh, who need to have a pole moved. Uh, this one was a little bit on the unique side. One, it was really thick and two, um, I realized it was, um, asking us to sign and to upload, um, an agreement on those. So, uh, I will have legal take a look at it, but I wanted you guys to see it as well. And, um, I didn't know if this was something that you've received in the past. Uh, if you've never seen it, then, then I know it's a new thing.
And like I said, I bet if we look at those, cause at first I was like, oh, there must be, you know, we must have hung signs or we put like a, you know, uh, slowdown or.
No.
But now I'm, I'm looking at it. I'm like, there is no offense, but there's nothing on Esti Street. There's no, there's no signs, there's nobody hanging things.
The chip and stuff.
Well, yes, yes, the chip, no, like I said, no offense, but that's the only thing I can think of is it must be that new fiber optic line that we put in that, that they're looking at. So I think we need to look at that closely because we want to make sure. Cause I mean, that's vital. That's, that's our backup for nine-one-one if anything happens down at the station. So I think we really need to make sure we, we know what we're getting ourselves into, um, by signing such agreement.
Well, I think Verizon was invited to give us a, a quote on the new contract for cable. Nobody, they were one of the few that did not respond at all. Charter was the only one interested in.
There's an awful lot of competition between these various utilities.
We invited everybody. It was a, when Joe and I were on the, the, uh, committee for the license, uh, renewal and Charter was the only vendor that responded to the, to the bid.
I don't think they're looking to come into Millville yet.
No, they said we don't have enough residents to make it worth.
No, it's not.
Come on, we're mighty. We just have to remind, Millville is mighty.
Sure, if I might follow up with Mr. Barrett.
Les, could you come up so that Jesse's doesn't yell at us after that?
Les Davis, eight Quaker Street.
Yes.
Follow up on what Mr. Barrett said, that Verizon was invited to put in a bid to provide cable. And I find that very strange because Verizon already has fiber optic cables throughout this town. They're on the pole.
Right, but not, not specific for FiOS or Xfinity.
It's a different.
Uh, that they run through, their lines run through, but not the ones that you need to provide. And it would be about ten years. Well, so now it would be about, well, how long has it been? Three years, two years?
Yeah, it's less than five, I know that.
So, so it's, now we're probably five or six years away from seeing Xfinity and FiOS and all that fancy stuff that everyone else in the world already has.
I, I was speaking to one of their field techs.
Yeah.
Supervisors.
Mm-hmm.
At my house.
Yeah.
About this very subject. He says, there's your fiber optic cable running right there.
Right.
And I said, you mean I can get FiOS off that? He said, yeah, if they would hook it, hook it up.
Right, but it, what we were told is, is Millville doesn't have the, the base that they would need to invest the, the, uh, money into bringing it to, cause if they provide it to Main Street, they're gonna provide it to every street.
Yeah.
In town. And, and we don't have the, the base that, cause they, now they'd be competing with satellite, Charter and, you know, so now there's three competitors. So now the, the pool gets smaller for each vendor and, and we couldn't support what they would need, uh, as a base.
I agree with that, but along the same lines, and speaking of that same gentleman, that supervisor of installation, our service comes out of one socket. One socket is already saturated right now. They said we're done. All we have to do is bring it right in.
Mm-hmm. But they, they don't. But the investment to bring it in, we don't have the, the base to, to support. That's.
Their Verizon line stops right in, in front of the Veterans Park.
So, so, and, and it was their choice not to bid on the packet.
Oh, that's him.
You know, not our, it wasn't our choice not to have him come. We, we invited as many that wanted to, to, so we would have more competition and hopefully our cable costs would go down. It didn't work out. We, unchartered does well for us. I'm not saying they don't, you know.
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll, we'll forward the contract.
Yes, right. And I'll, I'll give you an update as soon as we have something back from you.
The, uh, in your packet you have, uh, my, my attempted, uh, annual report for the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board for Fiscal sixteen. I would appreciate if you, you would review that, uh, make, make comment and, uh.
Yeah, I would suggest if you want to, um, take a look at what he has put together, if there are any additions, uh, that you think would be important, you can let the chairman or you can let me know directly and, uh, I can make those adjustments. And since I'm making sure all the formatting is consistent and everything like that, uh, we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I know, uh, the chairman has taken a very humble approach to this, uh, when he sent it and, uh, I thought it would be good to share it. And, um, I know, I think with anybody, we've had an awful lot that's taken place and, uh, it's always good to have other fresh set of eyes, especially when you're aboard, uh, to take a look at that.
And basically the focus of that report is Fiscal sixteen period. It doesn't overlap in seventeen.
Gotcha.
And I sent, when I sent it to you, it was formatted properly.
You're correct on that. You are, you are. Just tweaked a few things, just tweaking. It was excellent.
The, I'm gonna, um, ask Mrs. Callahan to address, uh, the, uh, yeah, the MSBA involvement.
In your packet you'll see, uh, both the, uh, elementary school statement of interest. As you know, we've been asking the superintendent since we had, uh, heard that they were going to do some statements of interest uh, back in the fall. And then, uh, as you'll recall, I had, uh, invited the chairman and the CEO of the Mass School Building Authority to come out, which he did, uh, before, uh, January first. And as a subsequent, uh, follow-up to that, of course, before the seventeenth, I think of February, the statements of interest had to be submitted. So, uh, since that time, I've been asking the superintendent for one week. Just recently had another meeting with the superintendent and, uh, with our chairman here along with our finance committee. Well, no, the finance committee chairman wasn't there, but our accountant, myself and the chairman. And so finally I did get this and I wanted to put it in your hands. Uh, we, on the heels of finally receiving this, uh, particularly related to the elementary school, we also had, um, been informed, uh, by the superintendent after I had made a call to the school building authority to make sure all the papers were in order because I had not seen this document yet. I was assured by the, uh, chairman and CEO that the paperwork was received and, uh, that they were going to be booking a visit. And then, uh, a day and a half later, the superintendent did get a call. Uh, they came out not just to visit the elementary school, but I understand they also were visiting over in Blackstone the other schools that, um, they had also filed the statement of interest. So all in all, both myself and the chairman showed up for this visit again. We went through with, um, those who are charged through the MSBA under the, um, executive director and chairman to actually look even more pointedly at the areas that we had already outlined in, uh, his visit as well as what was in the statement of interest. The one thing I, I would point out in the statement of interest, I, I'm glad that the chairman and I did go because I think, you know, there's an awful lot of detail that sometimes gets left out of reports. And if you look at some of the, um, pages that required, um, a greater detail, it was a little bit, um, I, I would have thought we'd have a little bit more detail. So I, I'm glad we went because I think providing that detail that might not have been in the report was really important. I know it was when the, um, executive officer for the MSBA came and I think it was important when he sent his team out to evaluate it. So I'm still very hopeful. Uh, I think we got a lot of good feedback between the boiler system and the details will be provided for them, um, the windows and, um, the areas that had been outlined. But I know that your, you know, board was interested in actually seeing it. Uh, the, the visit was, I think, a very good visit again. And I just want to thank this board for, you know, putting ourselves out there to work collaboratively with the school because this is gonna be the future capital needs of this school. And I think we've stepped up to the plate to do that. And, uh, and I certainly know that, uh, Dr. Hawey at the elementary school is appreciative of, um, our attempts to help and, uh, also the amount of time that we're spending to try to make this successful going forward. And this would be part of the accelerated repair initiatives of the MSBA. It's not for a whole new school. We're very happy with our school and we know that it's in excellent shape in some areas, but we also know that some of the infrastructure is aging and is gonna require, um, and that is the area we're hoping to, to get some funding assistance. And I believe you will. I'm always cautiously optimistic.
Superintendent Himmelberg is confident that, uh, we're gonna get something out of it. He's looking at a favor. The, uh, the last thing on the regular agenda is, uh, aside from, uh, a forum and a town administrator, is the FEMA meeting. I attended a, uh, FEMA, uh, meeting, uh, a week ago. And, uh, basically it, uh, it's dealing with remapping the Blackstones Valley, uh, area, uh, river. And, uh, what, it's, this, this is something that planning needs to be involved with, that we'll. I, I now have, as of, uh, two days ago, all the, the detail and the information was emailed to me and I will forward all of this with all the links to the planning board. And I will forward all of this with all the links to the planning board, uh, to pursue thi- this project. If, all it amounts to is the maps that we have, uh, some of the, uh, stratus lines on them. They have a tolerance of plus or minus ten feet. So, they have to relook at those flood claims, because the accuracies of the LiDAR radars now are plus or minus two inches. So, that, that's significant. And, and those maps have been, uh, around for a long time. But it's going to take, take a while. Uh, and when I send this information over to planning, you're going to see that we're in pretty good shape with, with the maps we have and the whole thing. We've complied with what FEMA was looking for initially, okay? Now, this, this is going forward from that. Okay?
Does, do they have a deadline on that, or?
Fifty months.
Fifty months.
It's a fifty-month project.
Okay.
Five-oh.
Yeah. It's a long time.
It is.
Selectmen's Forum. We'll start with Mr. Barrett. You have anything, Ron?
Nothing.
No, sir.
Alls I have to say is, welcome again.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as far as the town hall update, we always provide, uh, whether it's myself, uh, when I'm here independently, or my two trusty sidekicks. You should be more than welcome to come up. I think we're all getting very excited, uh, from all of the work that's being done. But we recognize we're almost there, but not quite. Uh, and now already Les has given us, uh, I think, a, a good, uh, rationale for wanting to make sure everything is in order before we get there. But, um, that you're so patient always to wait for this part of my, my agenda.
My question is, what are your top three milestones?
We have, listen, you call this the Ben and Jerry Show. The Les and Jerry Show. Uh, folks, we are moving around and, uh, getting our temporary town hall up and, and running. Uh, to give you a quick update on it, uh, what our strategy is, is we are working and trying to get the large room. If any, all of you are familiar with the, with the Legion. We're working from the large room over into what used to be the bar section and that area. We're trying to get that big room up and ready to go, so that we can say to you, "If you want to move your people out of the town hall into the big room, come ahead." And that's how we're approaching it. We're looking at the selectman's room, it's finishing it up, even though there might be people working over in the big room, because we'll be at a point where we call it clean work. It's finished work, putting ceiling tiles in the ceiling, going in, putting a faucet on a sink, quiet work. Won't work, it will not disturb people who might be over in the next room, where we can close the doors, lock them, and separate the two, uh, areas. In the big room, what we like now, basically, is we have to finish touching up two walls, finish paint, finish the trim work, painted trim work. Stripping the floor, putting in the new flooring carpet, uh, putting in the new, uh, kitchen area floor tile, changing out a double door, installing some door hardware on the doors that separate the selectman's room from the, uh, large administrative room. That's it.
You, you have the material on site.
Everything's there, basically. And what's not there, we'll be able to get there very quickly. Uh, in the selectman's room, uh, the ceiling grid is in. Basically, the finished coats or paint are all, all on, on the wall. We like trim painting, things like that. Stripping that floor and having new floor carpet put in, in that one. Uh, dropping in these two-by-four lights, uh, which will take probably maybe a day to do. The two lo-, two toilet areas. We have two separate toilets. One we built for ADA compliance, and the other one, it's just a regular toilet. So, you actually have two toilets in there. They're not male/female. They're unisex. Well, one of them is ADA, so we comply with ADA. Uh, there was a concern that was raised by someone, uh, and I'm checking with the plumbing inspector to make sure that we comply, uh, with the ADA and both toilets. I don't think we have a problem at all. Uh, we need to install a security system. We need to get the IT people, uh, in and start installing their, that, whatever they need to do. I've talked with Tim Labonte. The twenty-second of this month, cables are going to come in and install their cameras in the selectman's room. Uh, install his equipment in the data, uh, electrical room and data room. It's in, it's located in the, behind the, uh, the board of selectmen, the, the wall.
I read your, your email. It said the twenty-second of May.
Yeah, I know it said, it said twenty-second of May, but it's actually, it's twenty-second of April. He said, he said May. I continued it. And then I got to looking at it after I sent it out. I went, "That's not right." It has to be the twenty-second of April for the cable TV. Uh, but if that is the case, and that room happens to be ready, but you want to hold your meeting here because you want to televise it, you can still do that, okay? And then we can get it over there and get you set up. Uh, the exterior entrance, uh, we need to do that, the vet, new vestibule. They have, the instructor is giving, is giving me a material list. I will, uh, call Koeman, go down there, have that material delivered, so it's ready for them. They can start building that. Uh, we have, we have been assured that we're going to have a brand-new parking lot and driveway from the, from one-twenty-two Main Street up and in the whole parking lot area. It will happen this spring, and I'm hoping within the next month or month and a half. Keep my fingers crossed.
Mm-hmm.
But that's basically where we're staying. We're coming very, very close to a point where Jerry and I can tell the town administrator, "As far as we're concerned, you can move your people into this big room."
Um, also, the, uh, anybody who does drive by, you probably noticed that there's a rather large green top on top of the roof. Uh, we did have, uh, some issue with the winds we had here the last couple of weeks. It blew off, uh, maybe a dozen assault shingles had blown off that. Uh, we have, uh, had people go take a look at it, and we have covered it just to protect it, since we've done all the work inside, and put a large green top over it. Because I know some people have asked me, "What does that mean?" And so, that's what it means, is that we're protecting it for the time being. Um, we're going to have need to assess the roof later and see whether indeed it needs to be repaired and/or replaced. But that's, that's to be determined. Yeah, we just want to protect it for the time being.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the only other thing is that I can tell you that the, uh, amount of bullpens that are up there that, that will need to be installed and so forth, they're already onsite, as we know. Uh, they're in what used to be the pool room, and, um, we'll be moving those around so we can start to make things accommodate, to get the big room set up and have it go. Um, we're very close. And I know I've, we've been saying that for a while, but we are very close to having this. And, and, you know, within a matter of a number of weeks, we could have this ready to go, at least in the big room. And have that, uh, the toilets were the key consideration, to have that available, uh, for public consumption at least. And at the same timeframe, um, to make sure that we've got all the, um, painting done and all that, which is, uh, pretty much going to be finished, I think, by the end of this week. So, we're moving along quite, quite rapidly. It, it's amazing how quickly it comes together once everything had to be destroyed and then rebuilt is now starting to come together. So, feel pretty good about that. This is, uh, this is on target on time, and, uh, we'll get it done here within, obviously, the next couple, three weeks.
I just want to express, uh, to the board and to people who might be listening. I know people are saying, "Well, how come it's taking you so long?" We have been very, very, very fortunate and to have students and instructors from BBT. They have done all of the, the work in this building, basically. We've had very few, I can count on one hand, contract people that's come in to do any work. It's all been done by students and instructors from BBT, from demoing to rebuilding. The problem that we have is that, is you realize, you can imagine in your minds what time the buses arrive at school. So, the kids get off the bus, they go into the class, they get organized, then they get on another shuttle, small bus or van, and then they come out here. By the time they get here, it's nine-thirty, quarter to ten, maybe ten o'clock. Then they have to turn around and get back and be back in, at school, put their stuff away, be ready to go when the final bell sounds, and get on their bus to go home. So, you know, we're only getting sometimes three to four hours, or maybe four and a half hours worth of work out of them. You also got to understand, this is a teaching situation. It's not like having a gang of contractors and his personnel coming in, and each one of them having ten people, and they go in different directions, boom, and start to work. No. You have a teacher that is setting up a project for them, and he's explaining to them exactly how he wants it done, how they should do it, what tools they're going to have, set the tools up, and move. So, this is also a teaching element. And it's really, I have been amazed, by myself, of how efficient they are and how great these instructors are. And these kids are just, they are so pleased and happy to be out of that school. Not just to be out of the school, but they put up a fake wall in school in, in their department. And then they run some electricity to it. And then, at the end of the class, they tear it down, and then wait for the next class to come in and do the same thing. Here, they're experiencing the fact that what they put in is going to be used by us. And they really appreciate, they say, "Oh, my God, I did, people are going to use this, really use this." And they get so excited about it. And so, I just, uh, I'm amazed at them, and, uh, I can't say enough about them. But, uh, please understand, this is why sometimes this is taking so long, is that this is what we have to work with and work around. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to do it. And, uh, I'm very honored, uh, to be a part of it. So, if you have any questions, we'll, we're willing to answer them.
Yeah, we, I think we all understand and appreciate the situation.
We're looking forward to having a grand opening.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next in your packet, you'll see, uh, an actual, a couple documents that relate to the notion of, um, shared building inspector services. Um, there is a survey monkey. It seems to be, um, one of the things that CMR PC is putting out quite a bit to get feedback. Uh, I put this in your packet only because it does ask for different perspectives. The notion of a shared building inspector is one of the things we've talked about, uh, related to the fact that we already have a building commissioner versus a building, um, inspector. And we get so many hours out of that person, and that person also serves some other communities. So, I wanted to let you know that, um, there is some indications from CMR PC that they're looking at, looking at a couple of, uh, communities in this regard. I will say that for our, uh, building and inspectional services, we're already going through some major reorganization and also evaluation of how we do our work. We're going through, um, e-permitting. I'm trying to bring, um, the entire inspectional services up to a, a level where we can process not only requests, uh, for building permits and, uh, inspectional services and the like to a different level, but also making sure that we have people, uh, present and onboard. Our assistant inspector is getting closer to being certified as a commissioner, um, Lincoln Barber. And I know that, uh, we're excited about having that come on. So, uh, whether we're really fully engaged in this kind of model with another community, I would say that, um, I would, as an administrator, want to hold out a little bit longer to see how, uh, as we're making improvements in this area, how we want to configure it. So, I just wanted you to know in case you got this, because I can't see, uh, down, okay, you didn't. I thought maybe you also had it, but if, no, I wanted to show.
I did do a survey monkey.
Yes, that was another one. That was on overall. That was the, the one before where they sent it, and that was on overall shared services. But this one is specific to inspectional services. So, the next, uh, item on the agenda is the complete street signed agreements. Uh, it was wonderful that you came, because, uh, this was another area that, uh, had gone after a grant, and, uh, it has been executed, and we have been given permission to go ahead. And I've already, uh, signed with TEC Engineering to begin putting that, uh, complete street plan together. And of course, they will be evaluating all our streets and, uh, looking at all aspects, uh, in terms of, uh, safety in, uh, from motor vehicles to pedestrians, uh, to, uh, those people who may have special needs. And that will be, uh, something that, from what I understand from TEC Engineering, we may be able to actually see, uh, in hand, uh, by the end of the fiscal year. So, they're working very feverishly. And again, I, I emphasize how important this is, because for every grant that I'm able to get permission with, with this board's blessing to go forward with and with your, um, assistance in being able to execute, allows us to open up to other opportunities for funding. So, this will result in our ability to, uh, hopefully tap into another four hundred thousand to improve our streets, uh, so that all of the people in our community, uh, can begin to have much better streets that are safer and accessible. As far as the, uh, budget update, which is the next item on the town administrator's update, I just also, even though we went over the BBTech, uh, we finally did just the, um, this week, get the, uh, Blackstone Millville Regional School District Certified Budget. And, um, I put that in your packet. Uh, there is, um, definitely, uh, if you look closely, uh, I make a continued, um, increase in that budget for this coming year. I want you to know that we have been meeting with the finance committee, I have. Uh, we had a great meeting last night with the town accountant, um, the full finance board. And we are considering not just, um, BBTech and BMR, but all of our, uh, school districts that are submitting their requests. And, um, this one, once again, is something that, uh, after looking at what we have for pretty concrete numbers, we're entering into our, uh, next fiscal year budget with, um, existing operating deficit. And, uh, this is going to mean some hard choices. It's going to mean hard choices on the municipal side, where I've asked, uh, our town employees that have gone without for many, uh, years to give us, um, some indications of where we can maybe make some very slim growth. Uh, and I'm concerned that, uh, we're having to weigh very difficult choices here. Um, having said that, the finance committee, again, will be meeting, uh, next Monday. I've also reached out to our counterpart, um, to Blackstone, to, uh, my town administrator colleague, Dan Keys. I'm hoping to pull together at least, uh, from the financial teams to be able to speak before, uh, we get too far down into the process. But, um, I know that you had a...
I would be anxious to rejoin you with, uh, sl-, uh, the selectmen and the finance committee.
I think we'll have us meeting on Monday. I can see if we can maybe pull together, um, next week. We, we should be doing that. There is a strategy that's being laid, I think, with our, uh, financial team. Uh, one of the things that they wanted to do is really look at where we might be able to, um, share the sacrifice, so to speak. I think this board and the finance board, uh, is very much knowledgeable. We've had multiple meetings with the school superintendent. We've had, uh, even multiple meetings since last summer, our finance committee. So, we're well aware of all the things that, uh, coming sort of to the forefront of making this decision. I think we committed, and I know I did as a new town administrator, not to go down the road that we, um, wound up, found ourselves in last year. And I think, uh, if we're committed to that, then compromise is going to be important. Uh, and compromise with sound rationale and, uh, shared sacrifice, I think, is what we're going to be looking at. And, uh, and I think that's a rational approach that the finance committee's looking at. And I think, uh, hopefully that this board will also, uh, be able to endorse as we go forward. So, I'll see if I can try to set that up next week, if that's amenable, um, sometime after their meeting on Monday. Is there a preferred day that you might, uh...
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday next week?
Between, uh, uh, our finance committee for their...
Probably.
What time is it typically?
We can make it, we can start at six o'clock or seven o'clock. Just want to make sure.
Seven, good.
Uh, yeah. What day are you looking at? Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday, whatever works better for you.
So, I'll, I'll do either day, whatever they, whatever they can do.
Third, yeah, Wednesday works better, but I can do Wednesday or Thursday. I just have to do some readjusting.
Okay. I'll let you know as soon as I can work that out, okay? And I appreciate that, because I think it'll be just timely. Uh, and then the final, um, aspect of my bu-, um, town administrator update is Worcester Community Housing Resources. Uh, in your packet, I know I've talked about this. This was another grant opportunity that I had started, uh, pursuing back in the fall. Uh, there is going to be, um, I think, a, a quick release for an RFP that relates to demolition of blighted buildings or abandoned buildings. Uh, the general... The gentleman that you see on the email correspondence, Andy Horawath, is somebody I'm going to be meeting with this coming Thursday morning, and we're going to be looking at the Mug Pub property. As you know, we're going to be redoing the entire Central Street, and that is nothing but an eyesore, and we understand that it is, but it takes money to actually address that building. So, I'm hoping that having the person who actually heads up this initiative on behalf of the Attorney General's Office, once they see it, then it makes it easier for me to try to put it in words in our actual formal application. And so, if anybody would like to join me on Thursday, just know that that's going to happen, and I'll give you an update the next meeting. And that would conclude my Town Administrator Update. Again, we just have signatures, and just to remind you that our next regular meeting, once again, falls on a...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, after Patriots Day. And that would conclude what I have to offer to you, other than the fact that we will be going into an executive session after the signing.
How much will we sign? So, I make a motion under Master General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21, paragraph 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or a value of real estate which the Chair's declares an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town of Millville.
Second.
Only to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting.
Second with amended.
Thank you.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.